Okay, I call our meeting, our agenda meeting together and to order this morning, and I gotta wake up. I didn't sleep very good last night, so y'all got, and help me through this. We'll have the invocation, actually, I've got Dr. Clay Worrell will be here to give our invocation today. Pledge of allegiance by myself, approval of the minutes, discussion of an adjustment of agenda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Chairman Moore. We do have a couple of budget amendments that we do want to add, and I think the reason why they're kind of time-sensitive with respect to some ARP funding, and I believe that is all in my correct. Okay, so that we'll go to the budget amendments when we go through the consent.
And we will be having a closed session.
We will, yes, sir. Oh, the other thing I did want to mention in looking at our agenda, and you all should have gotten a copy of the email, is that we're going to go, we'll have a closed session, and we have a budget work session with Davenport and Associates, and then after that, Ms. Sylvia Barnes will be here and some representatives from the NAACP to talk about school funding for Dillard and for Goldsboro High School. So we told them about 30 minutes, that they wanted an audience. So we will not adjourn the meeting right after the Davenport presentation. They should be here around 2:00 to about 2:30, 2:45.
Who's gonna be here at 2:00?
Ms. Barnes.
Okay, okay. But at 1:00 on the Davenport.
1:00 for Davenport, and then, so it's kind of a continuation of kind of a work session, but she had made that request, and we, in talking with the chair, we thought that probably the best way to handle it, so we didn't have to worry about a night meeting.
All right, sounds good.
If you would please recognize that Commissioner Williams is via WebEx.
Is he on currently?
He should be.
Okay. I do want to make everyone aware that Commissioner Williams is not present here, but is attending our meeting today by WebEx. So all votes going forward would be by voice votes, roll call votes.
Yes, sir.
So that we will acknowledge everyone's vote. Okay, with that in mind, any more adjustments to the agenda?
I'm checking to make sure he's in.
Mr. Williams, are you present?
I am, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, great. Okay, any more discussion, any adjustments on the agenda? There's one more thing, and I didn't realize until last night, was yesterday or this week, Police Officers Day or something, did I say that?
Yesterday. I think it is National Police Officers.
Just yesterday.
Or the week, or, yeah.
Flags, our flag to have state.
Proclamation of that at the last meeting.
Okay, okay, all right.
Sunday was Police Officers Memorial.
Okay, all right. All right, so we'll move on to special presentations.
First, we'll have presentation of employee service pens, and then we'll have a presentation of service plaque to Sergeant Barbara Jean Cook with the Detention Center, and then Kim McGuire will be here to discuss foster care in Wayne County. And then after that, number four, motion to approve Older Americans Month proclamation as presented by the Services on Aging Director Paula Edwards.
Okay.
And then consent agenda, number one is application for President Use Value, and that has been reviewed and recommended for approval by our tax administrator. Page 11 through 12, yeah, from Ms. Brenda Carpenter, and everything's in line, and then number two is our budget amendments.
Your first budget amendment is for, is labeled as economic development. This is to transfer funds, this is from the Capital Reserve Fund, which if you recall, we set aside money in that fund for future capital projects such as this to purchase the remaining options in the brine property. The total amount is 1.675 million. This does include some estimated closing cost. That option expires, I think, in August, so we are budgeting for this, so we can be prepared for that.
There was some question in regards to the number of acres involved there. Have we got a survey on that?
118.
It is 118.11 acres at $15,000 an acre, less $100,000 previously paid, and then we did add a little bit of a buffer for closing cost.
Have we got a survey on that?
I'm not sure how updated.
Because I saw somewhere else it was referred to less acres than that.
I'm not sure how updated the survey is, or...
Okay, as long as...
We can check, we can check on the survey.
Just check on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Your next budget amendment is for Facility Services, and I'll let her get through the capital project ordinance. Okay, it's for Facility Services, and this one, actually, this one needs to be taken off the agenda.
That's correct.
Yes. So let's get past that one. That one, that one will be removed from the agenda packet.
Okay, so 446 is being removed off the consent.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So the next one is for Facility Services totaling $5,100. They are requesting to reallocate funds, this is within their budget, to appropriate additional funds for fuel, diesel, advertising, and cleaning services to get them through the remainder of the fiscal year. Okay, you have a budget amendment for Facility Services totaling $45,000. This is to appropriate additional funds for the fuel oil line item as well as water, and this is for the utility bills for all of our county buildings. It is being balanced by utility reimbursements in the amount of $16,500. This is a reimbursement we received from, I think it's County Mountain Hall for Steel Memorial Library, and then the remainder is fund balance appropriated. They just did not have any other excess line items that we could take and use it for, so we've appropriated fund balance, and I do feel comfortable with that. We've overcollected enough in property taxes and sales taxes, or we'll, we haven't yet, but we'll have overcollected, I believe, to balance that out.
I can understand the fuel oil, I'm trying to understand the water.
It just says that it's covering the cost of water due to the rising cost of both. We could certainly reach out to him for additional compensation.
Well, that's right, the city did go up, but...
Yeah, probably utility increase.
Do what now?
The utility increase on water.
Okay.
Okay. Your next budget amendment is labeled as Central Services in the amount of $12,200. This is a reallocation within the Employee Insurance Line Item. We needed to add $12,200 to cover May and June payrolls due to a piece of the, a piece of the premium that was not budgeted for, and we did have it in the insurance and bonding line item, so we're asking to reallocate that.
Excuse, can you say that again?
Sure. So in the employee, we're increasing the Employee Life Insurance Line Item. There was a, there was a piece of that premium that had not been added to the budget, it was for accidental death and dismemberment, and so we've actually had enough to cover it for the rest, for this fiscal year up until May and June. So we're asking to transfer funds from the Insurance and Bonding Line Item to cover the remaining months.
So it's $6,100 alone?
Right. And that has been corrected in the upcoming budget, so we shouldn't run into this again. Okay, all right. Your next budget amendment is for Juvenile Crime Prevention Council in the amount of $26,650. This is to appropriate additional funding from North Carolina Department of Public Safety. This is actually going towards Wayne County Structured Day. They do sometimes have discretionary funding available at the end of the year, and the programs can apply for it, so they've received some additional funds, and that is passed through. Okay, your next budget amendment is for the Workers' Comp Fund. This is a separate fund because it is self-insured by the county. We have a third-party administrator. We are asking to increase the Insurance Claims Line Item by $156,465, and we are asking to balance that with fund balance appropriated. That is with fund balance appropriated in the Workers' Comp Fund, not out of the General Fund. We do have some reserves built up that we can use that for. We have had a few additional claims this year that were higher than our normal claims, and we have a new workers' comp company that has been working to close out some of our old cases that were not settled yet. So hopefully, this will kind of even out within the next six to nine months.
And a little bit more explanation, these are probably some claims that have been carried over from past years.
Yes, sir, that's my understanding.
Okay.
Okay, your next budget amendment is for Facility Services in the amount of $20,000. They are requesting to reallocate funds from repairs and maintenance of buildings to repairs and maintenance of equipment. They've had some AC units that are getting, that are going down and in need of repair, and because we are approaching summer, we are all asking that this be approved.
Tell them to check this one, too.
Okay, your next budget amendment is for the Sheriff's Office. This is a reallocation of $18,000. You have seen DSS do something similar to this, where they are sort of separating out some of their line items so that they can track those expenditures a little bit better. So they had $18,000 left in professional services to go towards the accreditation program. They are just requesting to separate that out to a little bit more minute detail and follow it a little better.
No additional money, just transferred to another line item?
Yes, sir. All right, your next budget amendment, and in fact, this is your next two budget amendments, is for the Health Department. They are requesting to decrease their temporary health services in several of their programs and increase the salaries and related line items. As you recall, they did have several vacancies with, throughout the department, and they were having to use temporary help services. However, you all did approve for a recruitment, I believe it was a recruitment bonus of certain positions, and that has helped greatly, so they are in need of funds in the salaries line item since they filled those positions. So this is a reallocation within those programs, not additional funds.
But you said that you're going, that they're using it to increase salaries? Are you talking to increase the salary line item?
The salary line item.
Not the individuals?
Right, it, so they had moved some money previously out of salaries to temporary help services to cover their vacancies, but now that they've hired for those positions, they do not need anywhere near the amount in temporary help, and they can use it towards salaries now. Does that make sense?
Allison, how many vacancies does this cover?
I do not have that, does she send that at all? I don't have that information in front of me, Ms. Akot.
But this will be ongoing, the, you know, like usually when we do the budget, these items were not budgeted really.
Uh huh.
These vacancies, is that correct?
No, we do budget for vacancies.
Even if they're, they're not filled?
Right.
We budget fully for the positions, if the positions are created, we'll budget for it fully, and so what we did originally was move those unallocated funds to the temporary. Now that we're, we've got the positions filled, we're moving the temporary back to the regular salary item.
So it's actually the fund, it's the same funding that you, okay, I got it, I got it.
And there's one a little further, further back, that's the same way, just various programs, the numbers got split up, so I'll, I'll go over that one when we get there. So that covers those two, so Carol, you can go to number 481 now, or Kayla. This is a budget amendment for the Health Department as well. They are requesting to move $8,450 from their Salary and Wages Line Item to part-time or extra help. They have a part-timer that is reaching the maximum number of hours for the year, and they are asking to move the funds to cover them, to get them through the rest of the fiscal year. This position works in the lab and covers a variety of their programs, so this is not additional funding, it's just moving it to the part-time line item from salaries.
So the one before we move from part-time to salaries, and moving salaries to part-time will just...
No, that's, that is actually different, so this part-time line item is, that's a good question, this part-time line item is actual employees of the county that are true part-time. The last budget amendment is Temporary Help Services, where we contract with an outside company.
Outside, okay, got you. And that, when you contract with a temporary service, is it the same as it is in private? That they take care of all the workers' comp and the payroll taxes and everything?
Yes, I believe so, I believe that's right. They take care of all the payroll taxes, everything, of course. Okay, you have a budget amendment for the Health Department totaling $8,500. This is to budget additional funds for drugs and related supplies to increase the inventory in the Child Health Immunization Program. This is balanced by two Medicaid line items, the Healthy Blue and United Health line items, so they have revenue that's, they're anticipating to come in to balance that. All right, your next one is for the Health Department totaling $8,429. This is also a reallocation, moving it from professional services to professional services in a different program. This is realigning the Minority Diabetes Prevention Program, and they have a subcontractor, subcontract with United Way, so this is going to cover them through the rest of the fiscal year with that contract. All right, your next budget amendment is for the Sheriff's Office. They have received donations totaling $1,000, and they are appropriating it to the Special Program Materials Sheriff's Fund Line Item. All right, you have a budget amendment for the Health Department. This is the one I referenced earlier, that is also moving money from Temporary Help Services to the Salary and Wages Line Item.
One question on this.
Okay.
Okay, we're, I know it's moved within the departments, but the salaries and wages, the original, so we misforecasted that much on the salaries and wages of 20, what, 22,525?
No, it, so the money was in the line item, but we had to move it due to the vacancies, and so now that they've filled those positions, they're moving it back. Does that make sense? So it's, it's not, when we forecast our salaries, we do, we do forecast it conservatively, so we budget 100% of our positions for 100% of the year, and so what ends up happening is we have lapsed salaries at the end of the year that falls, that what we call it falls out into fund balance because that, we, we don't have 100% of the positions filled 100% of the year. So those salaries are always budgeted 100% of the year, if that, does that help?
So you can't pay temporary services out of salary?
Not directly.
Right, so that's where you have to switch back and forth.
Right.
So it's the same money?
Right.
You're just moving it back and forth for the...
That's right.
Yeah, it's a contracted service, and so we have to put it in the contract.
And this is unusual, we, I mean, I don't recall having this before, but just, it was just due to the number of vacancies they had this year, so this is not typical for us to move money back and forth, especially out of salaries.
Well, I'm just looking at 100%, and yet we've, we increased salaries, even though, you know, we've said we posted or done our budget for 100%, but yet I see increases in salaries.
Well, it's because we budgeted 100%, like in, in July, let's say the position was budgeted for 100%, but then we took some of that money when some of those positions were vacant, we took some of that money out of that 100% and moved it to Temporary Help Services so that they could contract with somebody to fill those positions. And so then, when they filled those positions, they requested to move the money back.
And I know this is confusing, but as everyone's aware, during the pandemic, nurses were in short supply, and everybody was scrambling to get nurses, and we lost nurses because there's a lot of dollars that were being paid for nurses to travel just into the next, next county. So what Brenda did was basically reach out and did some contract, basically...
Right.
For temporary help. Well, to fund that, they had to take the money out of the budgeted salary line item, transfer it over to Temporary Help. Well, now that they have filled those positions, they got to transfer it back to salaries to pay it. I hope that clarifies it a bit.
But it's the same money?
Same money.
Yes.
It's not gone up on anything, or from July 1st to now, does the line item will come up to the same amount of money?
Right.
You just can't pay temporary help, contracted services out of salaries, it's got to be in a lot, different line item. So now they're just moving it back.
Okay, your last budget amendment is for the Health Department. They are requesting to appropriate and anticipate a total of $6,000. They are anticipating $6,000 in additional environmental help fees to balance this out. The bulk of this is for repairs and maintenance of equipment. I think it was a piece of equipment that they have tried repairing and just, I can't, I don't think they can repair it any further, and then the $1,000 is for professional services. And that is all I have for you, I know that was quite a bit.
So walk on.
Yes, so we do have, as Mr. Honeycutt mentioned earlier, we do have a couple of requests for ARP eligible expenditures to use from the ARP funds. This would be not out of the $10 million of revenue loss, this would be out of the remaining 13.9 that, you know, we've been trying to, we're trying to figure out ways to use it, and we're waiting on some additional guidance in certain areas of it. So there's a couple of things that we know we can use it for. There are some sewer meters that need to be purchased, and that is an explicit use of ARP funds. That totals, it looks like around $210,000. And then the second request is to purchase ambulances. That is also what they call a safe harbor for ARP funds, and it would be to purchase four ambulances. The total is $1,070,527. It is my understanding that the ambulances are actually going to increase in cost in the next few months, so if they are able to take advantage of this pricing now, it would save the county some money. So what I'm asking of you today is approval to move forward with reviewing these projects and determining, you know, making sure they followed all the procurement guidelines and that they would be eligible for ARP and that all the documentation's been done, and if that's determined, to move forward with purchasing these items under ARP funds. And so we would, we would not move forward with it at all if we, for some reason, determined it was not ARP eligible. And it would be the motion to do that, and the, and then adjust the appropriate budget amendment and capital project, grant project ordinance, and I know that was a lot.
It's still gonna probably be two years before they receive them, probably, so. And a little guidance here, are we to take a vote on this at this time?
You add those to the budget amendments.
Oh, okay, so, so you're just basically going to add that as a request on our consent agenda?
Yes, I just wanted you to underst, I wanted to make sure you understood that if, for some reason, we determine they're not eligible, we will not proceed with the purchase, so it's only going to be if it's eligible in ARP, which I do believe it will be.
So the exact amount of that will not occur until you actually get the pricing?
Right.
And then you'll have a budget amendment for it to approve?
Right. Well, I'm asking you to approve the budget amendment now, approve the grant, right.
So you're asking us to approve something that you don't, one, don't know the exact cost, and two, we don't, I mean, I don't have a lot of information on it because I don't, what four ambulance are we replacing? How many miles on those older ambulances? The year they were bought, all that stuff? I need to see all of that before I make a decision personally, so I would ask that this be taken off because I'm not, I'm not comfortable with it personally myself.
Okay. The cost is for the four ambulances, I do know that, that's $1,07527. That's what they would lock us into before the price increase went up. And then the sewer cost, they do have the quotes here, it's, it's around $220,000. I say around because I've done some quick math in my head, so I have the prices here. I do not have the information on the replacement, you know, what they're replacing in the mileage and all that, I'm sure we could get that.
What we've done in the past, and kind of what we try to do, either we do remounts or we do new ambulances, and we've done remounts lately to kind of save a little bit of money because new ambulances are about $75,000 to $100,000 more than the remounts, so by using the ARP funds, we could go ahead and, and get them in, and replace those ambulances. That is really just part of our replacement process?
Yeah, still, I want some more information, just, I mean, just plain and simple, I mean, that's a lot of money just in a budget amendment for, for, out of nowhere, in my opinion, you know what I'm saying? So I just can't, I can't agree with everybody.
When can you have the budget amendments ready for...
Well, I can, I mean, we could get the budget amendments ready, but they don't typically have the information, I think Commissioner Foster's requesting, so we might need to just get some more information from Mr. Cudaback, and, and I'm sure he's got some, I don't know how, what all he has.
Well...
Would you like him to come and present on it this morning, if he can?
Well, we need some additional information, one, and number two, we definitely want to be cognizant of the fact of the price increase, and undoubtedly, we would like to save as much money as possible.
Right.
So can we get the information together and hopefully have it presented to us, so maybe we can make a, a separate decision, not on the consent agenda?
Okay.
But have a separate motion on that.
Chip, keep a date now.
Okay.
And I do have the proposal here, it does say it's dialed until Monday, June 13th, so I can certainly forward this proposal to you, and then if Mr. Cudaback can give us the rest of the information.
Well, if we can get the information together today, if not, then at our next meeting in...
Okay.
In June, I'm not sure what that date is, that would be before the 13th, we could take action at that time.
Right, right, okay.
I would like the information forwarded.
Forwarded to, to your email?
Yes.
Okay, sure thing.
All right. Next on...
One quick question, budget amendment for the sewer meters.
Yes, sir.
We're going with that one, correct?
Are we going, is any objection to the sewer meters being added to the consent agenda? Hearing none, let's, let's add that, click the one on the sewer meters.
All right.
Get further information on the ambulances.
Sure thing.
The other thing I'd like to know, and that is, are these ambulances already in our CIP? If they're already in our CIP, then all we're doing is just pushing it up.
We are, and, and they are part of the budget process as well. They're part of the budget process as well.
So get us some more information and present it to us in our... Do what now?
Would you like for him to come over?
I would, I'd like us to go ahead and hear from him and ask him any questions that there may be. Okay, so we'll, we'll add that if we can under New Business.
And I'll go ahead and forward the information to you, so on break, maybe you'll have a chance to look at it if you want to.
So we'll add item two under New Business, presentation by Mr. Cudaback. Okay, all right.
Item three is motion to establish a public hearing on June 7th, 2022, at 9:15 in the morning, in the Commissioner's Meeting Room and at the courthouse. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comment regarding the sale of county-owned industrial shell building located at 400 Chelan Court in Goldsboro, and being further described as Lot 8 in Plaque Cabinet L, Slide 37E of the Wayne County Registry. And again, this is our shell building with Hossakawa.
All right, we're, we're gonna need a separate motion on that, who's...
That's part of the consent.
Oh, it is consent, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, then number four, motion to approve the contractor pre-qualification bid package for the replacement detention center project. We had some discussions earlier. I think one of the things we did want to make, did we ever make the change on?
No.
Can you go over them right now?
Yeah, we, yeah, we'll have Andrew go over the changes that we would like to make recommendation once we went back and, uh, looked at it again. Oh, the.
Rank.
Oh, rank. Okay, all right.
What?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Everybody needs to wake up this morning.
Mr. Chair.
Antonio Wilson.
Yes, Mr., Commissioner Williams.
Yeah, I was overlooking that contract and I know initially in our meetings, we said that we weren't gonna place any AC units on the roof, but in the contract it shows, um, uh, mechanical on the roof. So is that something that's gonna be clarified?
I think the, the question was, we're leaving it in there too, in case we need to, but we're trying not to, if I remember that correctly. That is, it is in there to allow us, but we can change anything at this point.
Commissioner Williams, did you hear that?
No, I didn't.
Okay, would you speak in that microphone there?
Um, so we, we left that in there because they are gonna try and, uh, not put them on the roof, uh, but we had to leave that in there as an option. So, but that is, uh, that's why we brought it to you guys today for discussion. If we need to make changes, we can.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's mainly because of structural, for the roof to handle the units, that's the reason you left it there. So it kind of gives us the option. We do not want to and working very diligently not to have them on the roof, but we needed to leave it in there just in case structurally we had to. Is that, uh, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Williams, you okay with that explanation?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, now, go ahead and give us an update in regards to changes.
So there are two sections that we want to talk to you about. Do you remember the numbers off the top of your head? Um, so there's two sections. One is the criteria for, uh, when you, for the pre-qualification, it's gonna be your experience with, as it relates to other jails, the timeframe, how many and the dollar amount. And that's gonna be in Part B, Section D. Got that? So it speaks to the, um, dollar amount limit? There it is, you just passed it. There it is. So successful completion of a minimum of two correctional.
Fifty-third.
Correctional detention centers projects in excess of 20 million and total construction value and then also a January 2010. Um, in, in talking with Craig, I think there's, needs to be some discussion about, uh, those limits, changing those limits or those minimums, I guess would be correct.
I would think one would, would suffice instead of two.
That, that's, that's the discussion we had is especially you're not, they're not common projects, but we do want somebody that has experience in doing those projects.
And as far as the date, uh, since January the 1st of 2010, we're good with that?
I think we recommend, did we recommend just removing that altogether?
Yeah, we, we did because, uh, again, there may not have been that many jail projects.
So you, you're asking us to, uh, agree to a, a, a minimum of one, uh, detention project in excess of 20 million, uh, total cost value of each project and delete?
I don't think we can do 20 million either. We talked about that because, I mean, our jails wouldn't even reach that old thing.
Right. What are jail we got doing now?
Or the old jail.
No, 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 the old jail.
But that old jail, that's two different type projects.
Well, I mean, we can leave 20 million, we're just, we're recommending to take that out.
I think the actual, I think the actual, um, money, dollar figure, you know, would, would actually, we, we're talking two, we're talking about two different type buildings in my opinion, well.
I don't think that the type would really matter that much. It's still the experience in doing it, you know what I mean, more than anything. I mean, even though it's two different types of jail, it's still a jail, you know what I mean, more than anything. So I think that's the most important thing. I don't, um.
And, well, I'm talking about monetary, the different type, when I say different type of jail, the, the money that it's gonna cost to build is a whole different type of process. I mean, you know, you're talking a different type of construction.
It's gonna cost more per square foot to build this one than it did the last one.
Right.
Well, I mean, of course, I mean, it's two different timeframes, but you know what I'm saying, you can't even expect that, but at the end of the day, I just think that, you know, you gotta have, you gotta have something to make sure that we're, we're kind of sort of covered on any end at the end of the day. So, I mean.
I, I do want to point out that a portion, that one of the wings of the Wenders Detention Center was in fact the separate cells, is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct. So actually one of the wings did have individual cells.
And I think what we didn't want to get to, I, I think, and, and again, hearing the history of the past from this jail, the construction was somebody who was a first-time jailer and we don't want to be the guinea pig on anybody who, we don't want it to be their first-time building a jail because of there's some different construction, different, uh, rules and, and different requirements, uh, that you need to follow.
So your recommendation is that to be changed. I, uh, item one there is successful completion of a minimum of one correction detention projects, period.
Right.
Is that your, your recommendation?
Yeah, basically, right.
Okay, that is the recommendation then of staff that we modify that. Any discussion on that?
Um, so we're keeping the 20 million and, uh, January 1st of 2010? Is that what you're saying?
We are deleting that.
Yeah, just keeping the, changing the two to a one in that first sentence and then that's it.
Well, my thing with that is, okay, if you go before that date, how many jails are gonna be built like the one we're building before that date?
Uh, we, we don't know.
So you're getting right back into what Commissioner Gurley said. You're getting into someone that doesn't know how to build that jail because if you go off of the current jail we have now versus the new jail we want, we're right back in the same situation with someone that might not know how to build that jail because how many jails have been built like the one we're trying to build since 2010? So you got, you know, that going on, you know? So that's, that would be something that, that we need to think about before we make that decision.
So I would say on, on that section, we're, we're saying, okay, at a minimum, we need this and, and, you know, say we get, for argument's sake, say we get three people who, our three companies that qualify, we can still, we'll evaluate those and there's a matrix in there for you guys to review and then we will rate them and they have, there's our criteria they have to meet and that rating is an 80, I think it was an 80, they have to reach and there's all kinds of qualifications in there to get different points for different things. So hopefully, once we get those three or four, however it might be, we can take from that and rate those companies based on that and then pick one based on that. I don't know if that completely answered your question, but that's kind of where we're, where we're trying to go.
Yeah. I think our concern was that we're too restrictive here from the standpoint of interested contractors applying to be considered. Now, once they apply, there will be a process of evaluating each one of those that apply to those that undoubtedly would be the ones we hope would be the more experienced in this type of construction. Um, but again, that, that's to be evaluated at a later time. Am I correct?
Right.
If they bid, do we have to take the lowest bid if it's a contractor we don't want? I mean, how to?
Well, we'll have to.
And that, that's part of setting this criteria now i- is we're trying to pre-qualify them before they go through the bidding process because again, you know, I think we've, we've run into the situation, just taking the lowest bid sometimes ain't the right thing. So this is, uh, allowing those contractors to be pre-qualified, uh, before they, because it takes a lot of time, money and effort to put in a good bid. Uh, so we're saying, you're qualified to bid.
So let me, let me try to get some consensus here. One, from one standpoint, the staff is recommending that we just simply change this, modify this to state successful completion of a minimum of one correctional detention project, period.
Correct.
Uh, there is some concern about eliminating the 20 million of value and the date of January the 1st. So we need to decide whether or not, one, to leave in the dates and the amount, uh, and change to one or to eliminate the dates. And so, do we keep it or not?
So do we need, I mean, do we do a date or a dollar amount? I mean, would it matter?
I mean, I, I think, I think we should have a dollar amount because, I mean, I don't know, you know, what, what we're gonna, what are we gonna consider as a successful completion?
Yeah.
If it's just one, I mean, it could be, it could have been a smaller jail that costs, I mean, I don't know, a million dollars. I don't know, you know what I'm saying? At the end of the day, it could have been done fifteen years ago, you know what I'm saying? So it's a lot.
Yes, sir. Uh, could we put in there, um, uh, 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 a project should be in excess of 20 million dollars and should have been completed, uh, uh, since 2010? And that does set some parameters. It doesn't automatically kick somebody out, but it does set some parameters of what we're looking for by putting the should in there.
All right, now do, do want to point out, if I could, item two and three basically says successful completion of cor- correctional detention projects of similar size. And number three, successful completion of correctional detention projects of similar complexity. So we, we, we do have some other qualifications in there. So if we just have one as stating a minimum of one correctional detention project and eliminate the, the amount and, and the time or the date, uh, you're covered under two and three.
Just say, um, I get that, but if you're also covered, you can take two and three off if you put in a, a dollar amount almost and, and.
Again, I'm trying to get as many bids as possible here and we don't want to eliminate, uh, we don't want to eliminate someone because of the 20 million.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, the 20 million, I mean, I, it doesn't have to be 20 million, it could be 10, but I mean, the thing is at the end of the day, I mean, I just want it to be covered because if we're gonna get these bids and kind of sort of have to, I don't know what legal situation we're putting ourselves in with, with these bids or having to take the lowest one, as, as Ms., uh, Commissioner Acock said, um, that could be someone that's still kind of sort of inexperienced and, you know, we have a lot of problems.
What's the board for us to move forward on this one item?
Commissioner, um, excuse me, Chairman?
Yes.
When, when I'm speaking, will you please let me finish saying what I'm saying before you stop? No, I haven't stopped yet, but I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you. You can go ahead now.
Well, I appreciate it. Okay. Is there, is there someone that will, uh, help us out here and make a suggestion or a motion that we modify this?
I don't have a problem with just taking, just changing the two to one and leaving the rest of it like it is.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, is that in form of a motion?
Yes.
Well, do we?
Consent?
Consent?
Well, is, is that under consent? If it, if there's gonna be discussion, we probably need to take it off of consent and put it under new business.
Fine, let's take it off consent and move it over to item three.
Okay.
Is that new business?
Yes, under new business. So item four is being moved to?
Number three.
Number three.
Yes, sir.
Um, thank you.
I was gonna say, sorry, the only other section is that Part D that's associated with that, it's kind of spelled out a little bit more in there, but I mean, it's, if you change that, it's gonna change this.
Right.
So that was it.
Part D.
Uh, Part D, 4.2.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of, um, things here that give us additional protections.
But that's it. If we change that, then we would change the associated section as well. That's it.
Um, okay.
I get, thank you.
All right, so, uh, uh, again, under consent agenda, item four is being moved over to item three under new business.
Yes, sir.
All right, what's next?
Uh, and then next is, um, motion to establish a public hearing at 9:30 on Tuesday, June 7th, 2022, Commissioner's Meeting Room, uh, in the courthouse to allow public comments pertaining to the 2022, 23 proposed budget, uh, for Wayne County for fiscal year July 1, 2022.
Okay.
And then number, or well, that'll be number five now, um, motion to approve.
That'd be number four now. Yep.
Okay.
So five becomes four and six becomes five.
Right. Motion to approve a war for grant administration service related to the Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Revitalization Project to RSM Harris, Goldsboro, North Carolina. And, uh, we did go through a process, uh, reviewed RFQs and recommending, uh, RSM Harris for that project.
And which project is this?
That's the, uh, drainage.
Roland Wood.
Project at Roland Wood.
The Roland Wood Project, correct? Okay. Okay, any comments on that? All right.
Um, then under new business, uh, one is presentation and county managers recommended 2022, 23 fiscal year, uh, budget, uh, by, by me. Uh, number two is ambulance discussion and we'll have Dave Cudaback here, uh, talking about should we go ahead and move forward with ARP, uh, funding or not? And then number three, uh, discussion of contract pre-qualification bid package for the replacement detention center project.
Ms., Ms. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Cudaback, uh, you think we need to switch you and Dave? The reason I ask is because you.
Let me be last, I'll be last.
Well, I'm just saying, I, he might, you know.
Yeah, I'll be last.
His services might be needed.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
I'll be last. So we'll, we'll put date one, um, uh, pre-qualification bid package two and budget presentation three. And county managers report, Board of Commissioners committee reports, uh, closed session. Uh, again, as I mentioned earlier, we do have kind of a busy afternoon, uh, with a couple of work sessions. Um, we do have Davenport, we have lunch scheduled and Davenport will be here at 1 o'clock to go over our financial, uh, uh, where we're at on fund balance and debt service and those type issues. And then after that, at 2 o'clock, we've been asked by, um, Ms. Sylvia Barnes, there's a contingent of, of citizens who would like to come and discuss issues at Dilhurt and Goldsboro High School. So that will be at 2 o'clock and then we will adjourn after that.
Okay. Anything else on our agenda? Here we go, we're going to recess until 9 o'clock.
Um, can we get a closed session?
Uh, our closed session will probably some, uh, extensive.
It shouldn't take.
You don't think so?
Well.
Okay, well, let's go into closed session then. Uh, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Clear it out, clear it out.
I realize that.
Uh, well, we, 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 I, it's, okay, I'll just.
Yeah, we're gonna go into closed session, make this a motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, make a motion to go into closed session.